Okay, we are on to wait, does anyone need a break at 1:37 a.m. or can we just finish this?
Just push it, let's go.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a me- I have meetings to run tomorrow, I you know.
Oh, come on, it's not even 3:30 yet, okay. Okay.
Move it, man.
The next item. Allocation of $229,000, $229,017 of Cupertino's future CDBG funds made available through the federal stimulus coronavirus aid, relief and economic security CARES Act. Can we have a really fast staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Angela Sway, Economic Development Manager, and joining me is Colleen Lopez, the city's CDBG consultant. We'll be presenting briefly for your consideration that allocating the city's CARE CD funds towards the creation of a small business grant program. So I will begin by sharing my screen and starting the presentation. There we go. So this is, the city is scheduled to receive $229,017 in CARES Act supplemental funding from HUD. This is a special allocation of CDBG funds aimed at preventing, preparing for, and responding to COVID-19. So these HUD guidelines indicate funds can be used for a number of different uses, including short-term working capital assistance to small businesses. So if City Council was to focus the CARES Act funds toward financial assistance to small businesses, these are some of the HUD guidelines that are required. And you'll see that it would just mean that the city would have to institute and establish a process for the application, analyses, and confirmation of how to screen individuals. Also, there's some language there if you decide it to focus the funds on microenterprises and those are businesses with one to five employees. And again, the ultimate goal for HUD is to, for job retention and creation for low to moderate income employees. And I'd like to mention, Colleen and I are working closely with the regional HUD rep to confirm the exact job retention creation goals and possibly the grant amounts that trigger certain thresholds. All of their language is kind of being pushed out quickly through HUD, and it's just a lot to get through. But we're working through HUD to confirm that. And then all those staff has been putting together a number of resources to help small businesses during this pandemic. You'll see, we've put together a number of our webpages, COVID-19 Business Info, our Cupertino.org, Open for Business, highlights businesses that have been operating. Currently, the city itself does not have a financial program for small businesses. Just to give you some context on financial assistance programs in the region, here are some examples of what's underway in our neighboring cities. This is a breakdown of our closest neighbors. They are listed from left to right based on the total number of the program fund. So you can see here, Los Altos, Palo Alto, Santa Clara, Mountain View, Sunnyvale, and San Jose. You can take a look at, they alternate either their general fund or general fund with private sector donations. And then there's a variety, a mix of either grants or loans, revolving loans. And so tonight, we are recommending Council to focus the city's CARE CD funds towards the creation of a small business relief grant program, possibly grants of $5,000 increments would help stretch the funding amount to as many eligible businesses possible. And here you can see kind of the breakdown of, from the amount that we will receive, the estimated program administration funds, and then what would be left over to go into funding a program. And again, if Council decides to move forward, these are some of the next steps, and that would include coming, staff coming back in two weeks with amendment to the city's CDBG annual action plan and include a public comment period. Also, then we would kind of get into the weeds of selecting the grant dollar amount, and then the exact criteria of what businesses would be eligible. Also, authorizing the city manager to choose a third party to administer the grant and waive any otherwise applicable competitive bidding requirements to expedite the launching of the program. And questions or comments at this point?
Okay, I have a question. I asked it similar thing earlier when this was brought up. The concern I have is we see a lot of businesses that are not viable, opening in Cupertino and then closing in one year. Or in some cases, it was a restaurant that closed after only two months. I mean, I want the funds to go to viable businesses, not businesses that are non-viable and close anyway. And how do we do that?
That would be difficult because currently in the other application processes for other cities, what you're screening for, what you're asking the applicant to provide would be, you know, they've been in business for a year, they've they're suffering a hardship, so possibly showing what their revenue was a year prior to or six months prior to COVID. But there's no way to guarantee that they would be able to stay viable from here on out.
Right, no, but no, that's good. I mean, if they, if they've been in business for two years or, you know, whatever, can show their profit and loss, and they were profitable until now, you know, that's a good criteria. I'm just thinking of, and I don't want to name businesses, but one, one place not far from me that, I mean, it was clear they had no business case and they closed like within two months of opening. And I wouldn't want a business like that to take this money because it would just go to waste.
Sure, some, one of the criteria that you can put to, put towards the application or the eligibility is that the business has to have been in, operating for one year or two years. So that's something that can be one of the criteria.
Operating, but it also, can we have a criteria that it also has to not have been losing money during that time?
I.
I mean, do we see their tax returns or do we see their, you know, how do we know it's a viable business?
Yeah, I would have to check.
If we come back, why don't you let us take a look at?
All right, fine, yeah, I don't want to mic, yeah, I don't want to micromanage, I just, that was my concern.
Yep.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're on mute.
Well, anyone else want to speak? Is anyone else awake?
I mean, to speak to that concern, I mean, are we tied to this structure of a grant or are we open to other suggestions as to how we might utilize these funds?
Go for it.
This is just an idea to be, there is the ability to put these funds towards small business grants. There are other uses that these can be put towards, and that would include.
Think you can also use it, Vice Mayor Paul, for say more rental assistance?
Yes.
Add to your rental assistance program. It can go to helping homeless or assisting homeless. It can provide, I think, other supports such as food. So theoretically, if Council decided that those are the uses, this grant would go probably back to West Valley Community Services for those purposes.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm thinking about is implementing something along lines of a consumer choice aspect of this. So that, for instance, and this is just an idea off the top of my head, what if you were to make it available to residents and say, you know, you can spend a certain amount of money at a restaurant, we'll give you a voucher for a matching amount. And so that would actually give you the consumer choice element of it and speak to the mayor's concern about viability, because essentially people would be choosing particular businesses to support through this mechanism. We turn it into a program of some sort is the broader question. It doesn't have to be this specific one, of course. But do we have that kind of flexibility in what we decide to do with these dollars as opposed to an outright grant program for, for any business that asks for the, for the money?
There might be some restrictions in that, again, for HUD, one of their goals is to provide either create or retain jobs for low to moderate income employees. So I'm not sure if the funds then can be given to residents, kind of given the, the program that you're thinking about, that they would then be able to choose how they're supporting their local businesses. I'd have to look into that.
Well, yeah, we can look into that, but knowing HUD, it probably has to be more direct than say creating like a voucher program that's a little less direct.
Okay, well, let me ask a kind of a different question. Why is there an administration fee in addition to a request that we outsourced this? Is that part of the administration fee?
That can, I think that covers most of that. For the most part, that administration fee is going to be reviewing the auditing and all the documentation to make sure that if we are audited by HUD, that all the funds have been given correctly and that we wouldn't have to pay anything back. That HUD would justify and sign off on the program.
Okay, so most of the 20% that you're proposing for admin would be passed on to a third party, is that, is that what you're saying?
I'm hoping that that would include that. Right now, you know, working with CDBG funds, it is very extensive. And it does take a lot of staff work, so you know, we were just using that as a ballpark. You know, using the housing CDBG program, kind of as a rule of thumb of what they've been encountering. And I've been speaking with, as a possible third-party administrator, the Silicon Valley SBDC, their enterprise foundation. In speaking with them, they do have the capacity to do something like this. They'll be doing it for the city of San Jose. And they are saying that it would probably cost them about a 5% administrative, administrative fee.
Sorry, what's the name of that organization?
It is the Enterprise Foundation as part of the Silicon Valley Small Business Development Center.
Ah, okay, great.
Okay, thank you, those are mine.
Okay, anybody else? Liang?
No, I moved to approve this agenda.
Wait. I've never, I'm in shock.
Second.
So John or Rod has something to say, okay?
Yeah, well, my hand, my hand's been up, you know.
Oh, okay, I haven't been looking at the screen because I was asleep, okay, what is, yeah, go, John.
So, so very briefly, I mean, the administrative fee of $45,000 of the 229 is 20%. And, you know, I liked what I heard at the end there. Thank you, Darcy, for bringing, you know, starting that dialogue, you know, 20% when we were making the grants to the, including West Valley Community Services, and they had their administrative fee at 20%. We clearly were telling them that's too high, and then here we are, you know, with the same number. I think we need to be a little bit better when, when we're asking other entities to reduce their administrative fees. Now, at the end, Angela said that, yeah, there's this one entity that can do it for about 5%. And so I would be saying that I think we need to be trying to place this money with entities that are going to have the lower administrative costs. I do think it should go directly to the businesses as opposed to such small amounts, you know, meals and, you know, can, can any one business get enough meals, you know, to make up for the amount of money that they would need to, to pay their staff and stuff? I did like the concept that Angela said, you know, maybe $5,000 increments, you know, maybe $10,000 increments. You don't get too many of those into $229,000, especially when there's administrative fees. So that sounds like a good number. I think it'll get businesses that were, you know, really running up on the rocks to at least have a little bit of breathing room. And I'll rely on the administrator to, to do their best to not be giving it away to businesses that aren't, aren't going to be in business, something leave it to them. So, okay, let's move.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one public speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, yeah, thank you for reminding me. Sure, let me go to that attendees. Okay, Kitty, welcome.
Hey, good evening or good morning, Mayor Sharp. I was just looking at the numbers, like really quick comments, you've got, you know, say $200,000. If you divide it by 5,000, you end up with 40 people. And I'm thinking, you know, if you're trying to retain an employee, how far is $5,000 going to go? I thought the, the idea of doing something for the homeless was intriguing. And I'm wondering if you, if you hold that money in a, in a larger pile and have, you know, less, you know, try to, try to put it all towards one project as opposed to dividing it out. You know, will you get, you know, a better result in the end? So I'm really concerned about how small that $5,000 actually will end up being for an employer. All right, all right, good night.
Good night, thank you, Kitty. Okay, so if somebody wants to bring a motion on this?
I just, I wanted to understand.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
What, what alternate uses could we make of these funds? It looks like we have pretty wide discretion. Can staff answer that?
Yes, so there are restrictions for the funds, however, they do include, and I'll pull up, maybe I can pull up the slide, or, you know, I'm just gonna.
Just talk for to save time, Angela.
Sure, okay, so there are 25 eligible CDBG activities and that wide range of public services to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus. It would be providing food and health services for low-income elderly persons and children, small business assistance or emergency housing payments. And then one other point is kind of the alteration to neighborhood business district sidewalks and facades to enable curbside pickup or social distancing. So those are just a few that HUD highlighted, but I can come back to, with Council, with the other eligible 25, if you want.
Well, it could include further housing assistance. I mean, we've already done some of that. Correct, or am I making this up?
Nope, correct.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, from, from where I sit, I think it's very difficult to be as, as Stephen said in the beginning, it's difficult for us to adjudicate, and even for an administrator to adjudicate how to distribute this money fairly. I, I would prefer to see the funds go toward further housing assistance. I, I, I think it's a lot harder when we start to try to poke around in, in, you know, business businesses and try to understand their books and who truly is worthy of need and who's not. This is a lot of money. This is 200, what, $26,000, so I, I can't support this.
I mean, how, how do the other cities do this? You know, we saw that all those other cities are doing business stuff, so how are, how are they doing this? As Rod has a good point. But, and I saw some of them are doing it by lottery. I mean, is it, can any business apply or are there qualifications?
There are qualifications. The lottery versus first come, first served is just the way that they're administering, they're holding the program. So it would be first come, first served for those program, for certain cities would be whoever logs on first and submits an application. Then it's the first, let's say, 25 or 50. The lottery system is anyone can submit their application, everyone's given numbers, and then numbers are drawn. And then staff would follow up with the number holders to take them to the next step. So that's the, that's what first come, first served versus lottery means.
That doesn't definitely mean you get the money, right?
Let me clarify that I wouldn't consider this under any circumstances, but I think this needs to be that I thought, if, if we are going to have a system, I would like it based on merit and, and you know, I would need to understand more about.
Some sort of criteria, Rod, is that what you're driving at?
Yeah, and, and honestly, from, from where I'm sitting with a homeless encampment, I would favor figuring out how to help folks in a homeless encampment over trying to parse out which small businesses are, you know, are most in need. So it's not like I'm opposed, you know, without reservation, but I, I, I would need to understand more to make this kind of a, an allocation of this, this valuable funding that we, you know, isn't, isn't going to isn't going to come around all that often.
Yeah, you know, I tend to agree that I would have preferred housing assistance now for, you know, the issue with the homeless, especially in those encampments, is that, you know.
What do you do?
They've been offered help before and they don't want it, and what, you know.
So, so I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to design alternatives here tonight, right? That's not my point. I just, I would just say, I, I need to understand a lot more about this to feel very comfortable that this is the right way to use our CDBG funds.
Angela, could you please show the slide you have about what other programs, other cities have been, have offered small business?
Sure, let me go back.
That's not in the staff report, right?
No, that, this was not in the staff report. Let me go ahead and share my.
So could you, could the staff add this to the agenda packet? This is good information.
So you should be seeing what's up are the neighboring cities and their programs.
So the neighboring cities, or these are already approved programs that they are offering their business?
Cool, some, well, there are three that I believe their councils have approved, but the programs have not yet launched. So you'll see the launch date. If there's no exact date, that means they haven't launched yet. But the programming has been approved by their council.
So they have all, they all have some kind of program. Cupertino has zero.
Correct.
And I believe, I know that Palo Alto, Santa Clara, and I think it's Sunnyvale, they already started a task force to look at or roundtable to start a discussion with businesses on how to help them to recover quickly. So that we figure out how before they are able to open. So that's already starting and we have done zero here in Cupertino also, right?
We haven't done outreach. We've been working with the, although we have, we're working with, Deb has kind of coordinated an EOC team, staff team, to start looking into kind of what those steps would be based on what the, the state is releasing and possibly what the county then would release. And so that, where we're trying to gather that information before we kind of reach out to the businesses to say this is what we're looking at.
So maybe we can also take a look at what their roundtables are talking about. They are talking about strategies to help speed up the recovery somehow.
Sure, but I think that's separate from their funding these individual business grants and loans.
Yeah, good. So it's good to know other cities are, have some kind of assistance. I think every sector of the economy needs help. So.
The reason, all, all, the reason that when we got this grant money, Carrie and I were discussing it, and I thought because Council had already determined a rental assistance program, both loans and grants, that maybe a balance to that would be to help small businesses. But if that's not how the Council wants to use the dollars, then certainly we will take direction from here if the decision is to vote down doing support for small business with this, these dollars. Or we can, you just have to decide whether you want to support small business with these dollars. Today, we can come back and build a program and tell you what we can do with it.
Right, do we, do we have to decide tonight? I'm not opposed to helping small business, but I just don't think we have enough information here right now. Yeah, you're right, we spent $200,000 on rental assistance. But I'm sure they'd be thrilled with $229,000 more.
Yep.
So, yeah, I'm torn. I don't know, I don't know enough to make the right decision.
Every sector needs help. So the, the item today is to move for consideration, right?
Consideration of.
Consideration of allocation, so that the staff could go ahead study so that we will have more information next time to decide.
The next steps would be to come back into.
Consider both business and residential option next time to bring back.
You know, the challenge, and I think Carrie Huesler had mentioned this before, is when you start dividing up the pot of money, you're, you're kind of also taking a portion of the admin fee because you're going to need a different concentration of folks to work on the housing portion and then for small business grants. So it's probably better just to concentrate all the funds towards one program.
How are the other cities funding their small business grants?
They're all funding it out of the general fund in combination, some of them with private donations.
So they are not using the CARES Act?
No.
No, not these cities, no.
So is the, would the administration be easier if the funding is provided to as rental assistance versus business? Maybe the, I know a CDBG grant has higher
requirements, yeah.
Requirement to a lot of paperwork, so would it be easier for providing rentals since that we already are doing that?
Well, I don't know that would be easier. Angela has found another source that may be able to do it for 5% overhead so that you maximize the dollars going to small business. They're already supporting San Jose.
Sunnyvale.
Oh, Sunnyvale, sorry.
Yes.
So I can add that there was a question from the mayor, I believe, on next steps. And so with, and Colleen, please jump in too, with CDBG funds, we have to have these uses in the action plan and the consolidated plan. And so the, the current year's action plan and consolidated plan would need something called a substantial amendment in order for us to receive our funds and spend our funds. And so what we're looking for is direction on what type of program so we can not only build it out, but we can bring back the appropriate CDBG documents for adoption, and then we can submit them to HUD and make the program official. So we, the, I think one of the recommended actions was to consider these funds tonight so that if we receive direction to continue with the program, Angela would bring back the substantial amendment in two weeks and we would go through the steps of the CDBG process. And to add as well, we do have the fiscal year 2020 through 2025 consolidated plan coming to Council on June 2nd. This would be an amendment to the 2015-2020 plan. So we're working on adding language for this to both plans because we know it's just a technical detail we need to work through with HUD. So that's a big part of CDBG. That's a big part of C D B G. The the documents.
When I said to consider both options for residential and business, I do not mean we want to divide the pot. But I mean that next time it comes back to to the council. We'll have both options for consideration and more clear picture on both.
We can do that.
Would that be too much work for the staff?
We could, it's just a matter, as Carrie had mentioned, it's a matter of timing because. Um, if we don't get your clear direction tonight, uh that impacts. Uh, our amendment to the action plan, the C D G B um action plan and consolidated plan. Which then pushes back how soon we can submit that that documentation to HUD. Um, and then actually get the funding or future funding.
Oh, so you need a clear direction, either it's business or rental, so that you can submit the. Amend the plan.
Yes, coming back in two weeks to amend the plan. Correct.
Okay.
We also have a public noticing piece. So we need to um draft the amendments ahead of the public hearing or hearing and. Put a legal notice and then put them out for public comment for. Five days. So we're doing something is ahead of the next public hearing. Ahead of a decision.
Then that means a lot of these details that we don't know yet will have to be finalized in two weeks. Would we be able to do that? Like the qualification for the grant?
Oh, the the qualifications don't have to be in the amendment. So as long as we can get your decision on whether it's uh where the funds are going. Then we can update the amendments and then programming can happen after that. So those types of details like criteria don't necessarily have to be in the um amendment. But just um a clear direction if it's going towards small business or towards housing. That's, I believe, Carrie and and Colleen, is is that the level that we would need?
Yeah, and I I would say too, with C D B G, the regulations are so strict. That just like our other C D B G programs, we. Approve the funding and the concept and then we refer to the guidelines for really the the details of. Qualifications and how to implement the program. So as Angela mentioned earlier, um, this funding is rolling out so fast that HUD is working overtime to get back to us on details and questions. Everyone's working hard, but there's some things that need to be ironed through. Um, or ironed out, so.
So I'd like to move for this item. I think, yes, we need probably. More funding for rental assistant, but seeing that. Cupertino didn't provide any assistance for our small business, I think it's. Great that staff has brought this to us for consideration. I think. It's something. If the federal government provides the funding, maybe the next funding cannot be applied to business. I don't know, so. I'd like to move this item. For.
I'll I'll second, I'll. I'll second that in the sense that, you know, the need is there now. You know, the small businesses are clearly, you know, their doors are closed, they're trying to find out how they can. Can get some kind of business started and yet they still have all their expenses. And the need is now and if we wait another two weeks and. You know, I I think we should make the most out of making it available. And if it's uh not all used up uh within the next two to four weeks, we can. Look further, but.
Okay, all right, so there's a motion in a second. Why don't we take a vote?
Council member Chow?
Aye.
Council member Sinks? Uh oh. Did we lose Rod?
He might have left. He said he said he had a meeting tomorrow. I don't know if he. Signed off for one.
Okay, well.
I I don't see him. Well, I can't. Uh, no, he. I don't see him there.
Council member Willie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Air Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries with Sinks absent.
Wow, people just leave without even saying they're leaving. Wonderful. Um. Okay, let me go back to. The next agenda item, which I believe is. Just more um anymore. Reports from council. Let me go back to the. Let's see, oh, yeah, staff and council comments, sorry. Sorry, my computer is now hung. I can't even see the agenda, so.
That's the last thing.
Huh?
It's the last thing, obviously.
Right, I know, I just can't, um. For some reason, I legislate's not letting me in anymore. Um, anyway, are there any more council comments?
I'll just, I'll just.
Twelve in the morning.
I'll be just real brief, you know.
John, you always say you'll be brief, so be brief then.
So. I I see is one of the critical factors for uh opening up. Businesses in the city is testing. And when I went on the uh county website and looked for where the testing is. You know, there's two of them in San Jose and they're nowhere near this side of town. And so I'd sure like to figure a way for city staff to get us on a wait list. For getting a testing center on this side of town. That's all for tonight.
So it that that. That is apparently going to happen soon. I think it's. Either, oh, it's a mountain, there's gonna be one in Mountain View. Is what I understand.
I think that's true.
Right, yeah, I because at the Cities Association meeting, they talked about that and. Uh, it was gonna open in Mountain View, Mountain View, and the mayor of Mountain View didn't even know about it, but. The person, people from Palo Alto knew that it was gonna open.
Well, I I would get on a list for us to get one closer to. Uh, us, Saratoga, Los Gatos, you know, this side of town. That's key. If we if we don't identify the people that are infected, those infected people are gonna infect more people. And key is to get the testing available.
You you are absolutely correct and the testing. The the amount of testing in our county has been. Deplorable. You're right. How do we reopen when we have all these asymptomatic people? Spreading and they have no way, there is no way to get tested. There's still really no way for an asymptomatic person. To get tested. Now, I do know Kaiser's about to open up. Uh, at the beginning of June, a huge facility, but that's only for Kaiser members. So it's not gonna help non-Kaiser members.
And and let's just re.
Yeah.
Keep this to brief comments and any discussion can happen, maybe this future meeting.
Okay, but yeah, John, you had a good point. Okay, so John, you were done. Leon, did you have any council comments?
Um, yeah, so there we received the mask donation from a Chinese uh. University, a uni, an alumni association, so thank you that the mayor and city manager received the. The mask donation this morning. Um, I think, how many did we receive?
I think there was eight thousand.
It's eight thousand masks of, I think, three different types, right?
Right. Now, there were two types of masks and there were also some gloves.
Okay, yeah, so I think they specifically wants to dominate to small businesses and um. Cupertino residents.
The police department.
And police department, yeah. Do the police still need masks?
I will inquire.
Because last time I asked fire department and police said they have plenty. However, some residents also said that. They see policemen out and not wearing masks and within six feet of each other. And they knock on their doors and not wearing masks.
All right.
I will contact the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Rod's gone. Darcy?
I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I have nothing else either and. Anything from staff?
Nothing, thank you.
Oh, wow, okay.
Actually, I I do have a future agenda item, sorry. So I hope that we will reconsider the sound mitigation for Red Knob. Creek Trail residents. They have now accepted that this is happening. But then they really hope that the city can do something to help with mitigating the the noise. And then La Zonal Red. Road there is still not resolved, so really we. If they need more funding, I think we really need to consider those.
So just while you're on that, though, I think, you know, I I also want to be uh able to consider those things at the hundred percent. Uh, level.
Exactly.
So.
Okay.
Okay, so we will consider maybe potentially more funding, but then. Don't they need to make those requests before the hundred percent design is ready?
So to the extent this is about future agenda items, the item is coming back to you at the hundred percent.
And asking whether it's practical to do it with the hundred percent design. If not, maybe the staff needs to bring that forward earlier, okay? And the second is the request to make library field a park. I think we should. I wonder if we. Maybe. It could be like a covenant or some kind of. More firm confirmation so that residents. Are. More sure that this will not be taken away.
All right, so if you wanna put an agenda item to discuss the. Future of library field and what can be done with it, I will be the second person to. Um, say that I would like that agenda item too. So we can put it on an agenda.
Okay. And then. Third is, I'd like to request for the staff to. For controversial project, the staff should not make a. One recommendation. Rather, the staff should provide options for so that the council can make decision on this project. Because when the staff make one specific recommendation, often the staff report reads like advocacy report.
Okay, so what is your agenda item request?
Um. If the staff does not agree with my uh request, I will have to make this an agenda item for the council to confirm. This.
Okay, why don't we work with the city manager and see if uh we can get that done?
Yeah, Leon, you already mentioned that to me.
Yeah, but then I'm not sure if it's uh you you don't seem to agree, so.
I said I would confer with the city attorney and then.
Yeah, and then another is I have requested also to put. The staff should provide a set of standards that. So that the applicant can provide compliance analysis, item by item compliance analysis for each. Application as a part of project application. This was done by Volco. They have a very nice item by item table of which standards they apply. The reason why, which part of their project plan state shows that they comply. This can be, we, it's too late for Westport, but then we should we we should require this for future Westport project. And I have a few communication with the city manager. He. She's still contemplating whether. This is necessary, so. If necessary, I would like the council to make that recommendation. And um.
I second.
Okay, then we need to put it on the work, we need to put it on the work plan then, okay?
Yeah, another thing that's. Important is uh. I think the con, the decision from Volco S B thirty five taught us that it's a. Staff decision. Whether annoying annoying might be non. Might approve of non-compliant project. Therefore, it's important to weigh in best the accountability and transparency. In the project approval process, the paperwork. Uh, starting from project submission to. Throughout the process, somehow, how can we ensure that there is accountability? When the staff says this is complaint, we need to be sure they interpret the law. More strictly to the in best interest of the city. How do we ensure that process we? We need to build that into a ministerial, into the process so that whether it's ministerial or discretionary process. Project, we are. We are sure that's um. Uh, we are doing the due diligence.
Anything else?
Um.
Please, no.
Um, okay, and then. There are other items are for the density bonus project that I hope we we bring back. Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
All right, adjourned. Good night, everybody.